All right, the time is 6:00 PM on September 8th, 2020. Welcome to the Town of Florence Council Meeting. At this time, we can call the council meeting to order Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Councilwoman Hughes.
Here.
Councilwoman Cordes.
Here.
Councilwoman Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Wall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, we are going to take a moment of silence as well as our Pledge of Allegiance. During our moment of silence, I would like everybody to be reminded of an anniversary of 9/11 that is coming up this Friday. If we could please take an extra moment to honor those who have lost their lives or That's Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Under God, indivisible, with all.
Thank you. At this time, we will open up call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during open call to the public unless they're properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, Mr. Trenton Schiffer, is there anybody who has notified us that they would like to speak at this time?
Mayor Kathy Adam would like to speak.
Okay, hi Ms. Kathy Adam, how are you tonight?
Hi, I'm sorry, let me get myself back on here. I can't control the video, can you hear me?
I can hear you, we can all hear you, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, it says the host, okay.
At the bottom is there a video, there you are, there's your beautiful face.
You know, it even be a video, it's nice to see you all. I really miss everybody and I hope we get over this COVID thing soon. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me speak, I know you have a very packed agenda. At the last meeting, I had a little misunderstanding on what the agenda was in terms of the CARES money, so you all received an email from me. I have kind of reoriented and reset now that I understand better where you were going and you were so far down the path with your grant. I also had an opportunity to regroup with our chamber director, Roger Beatty, and he filled me in on what's happening with the marketing in terms of the Arizona State Tourism Board and what the town is doing for a plan. So my hat's off to you, it's music to my ears, I am absolutely thrilled to hear it. However, I understand it's kind of a ways off still, and I really want to make a plea for all of us businesses. It takes a long time to get results when you start a marketing campaign, and we are really starting kind of from ground zero the right way, I'm very pleased about that, but I fear that that's not going to impact my business soon enough. I am looking right now, I need to be in market in order to have some sort of assurance I will have some traffic in the January, February timeframe, and this is very much affecting our staff, our paid staff, because I cannot embark on a new year with no clue as to what kind of traffic to expect. We are not expecting a large return of our snowbirds. We hope that they do come back, but it's very possible they don't, so we need to totally reorient and start, and we should, go after people who live in Arizona, and if they're as stir crazy as I am, I think there's a very good possibility they would like to drive to Florence from Phoenix or from Tucson. So my point of being here is to ask your indulgence and consideration on a couple of simple things and one not so simple. There's a kiosk on Main Street, and I talked to Ally Feliz and I saw that the very nice posters went up because the old ones were pretty ratty. I would like to ask if the town would consider letting us use some of the blank space, there is a blank side of the kiosk, for the two posters which you all received in your email. One way we have of making some money, revenue, without even opening our doors is by the historic walking tour of Florence and the cemetery tour, which of course Chris Reed leads. And I'm going to just put a little plea in for Chris as well, this is her livelihood. Without getting these programs off the ground, there of course are no speaking engagements, right? So we very much depend on this, and I think it fits the town. So I understand it's a private business, but our product is the town. So I would like to ask if you consider, if there is space, if it's not already spoken for, I need a presence on Main Street, okay? The second thing is, in your overall picture, and this ties to the tourism and the marketing plan you're doing with Roger, if there is a way you could advance some of those monies. I already am working with two other businesses with Mr. Harold Christ and Michael Baca. We are going ahead with the marketing plan, we have already engaged to do a 30-second video, and we are in the market to buy lists. I would love for this to be a joint effort with Roger, so that as you do ramp up to the bigger marketing plan, that all these efforts are in sync, plus, we might be able to see some business sooner for the, for the town, for all of us. And I'm just, one last thing, I did see on the agenda, the lieutenant Terry Tryon is, has retired, and my hat's off to him, I'm so sorry we can't be there in public but, or together, but I just want to say, he has personally made a big difference, so want to just congratulate him, thank you.
Thank you, don't go anywhere yet, keep your camera on. At this time, I want to, first, I agree with your sentiments, Terry Tryon, 30 years of service, absolutely amazing. In regards to the first item, kiosk on Main Street, I am going to ask Brent Billingsley or Ben Bitter to get with Ms. Kathy Adam to see about that, especially if that site is not being used. And in regards to the marketing plan and advancing some of the money, I know council does have some contingencies in regards to wayfinding side, so if we are going to be able to get some of that money there, again, I'm going to ask Brent Billingsley and Ben Bitter to set up a meeting with you to discuss both items one and two in depth, and then if need be, bring it in front of council for discussion and possible approval.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we have five other attendees on the line. At this time, if any attendee would like to speak, you can dial star nine on your phone, or I've actually allowed you to speak in the meeting, so just unmute your phone, state your name and address, and address the council. Okay, I'm seeing none at this time, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and close call to the public at this time, opening up item 6A. This is a presentation of the 60% by J2. I am going to introduce Mr. Hezekiah Allen, how are you this evening, sir?
Good, good, Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to be introducing Aaron Allen with J2 Design. He is the Vice President and Principal Landscape Architect for the firm. As a part of the contractual obligation with J2 Design is them making a presentation to council regarding the 60% plans. Please be aware that this is very conceptual, there are still a lot of variables that need to be worked out before we get, before we get to the point of actually breaking ground. For example, we've got to make connection onto Desert Colors Road, but, but that's a part of a bigger process, so when you're hearing this presentation, just know there's more to come as far as this process. So I'll turn it over to Aaron Allen.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for inviting me tonight, Hezekiah inviting me tonight to give this kind of presentation and update. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen then, when I can find that button really quickly. I think I somehow would have gotten kicked out of the meeting, no?
You're still here.
I'm trying to find where my screen sharing went, oh, here it is. Sorry, this is my first council presentation through Zoom. Okay. Can everybody see the screen now? Excellent. Okay, so some, a little bit of background on the project, this has been kind of a multiple year phased approach to developing the, the Post and Butte Open Space and Trail Parcels. The, the town currently kind of owns a chunk of land surrounding the Buttes, and several years ago, they started the process with the Bureau of Land Management to obtain additional land on the east and west sides of those parcels. So that's kind of what this graphic is showing, is that this area here is the current town parcel. This is the parcel to the east, and a parcel to the west, that the town is in the process of working with the Bureau of Land Management to, to obtain that additional land. As I said, this has been a multiple phased approach, so it started with a master plan level, a real conceptual level of looking at trailheads and how we could accommodate trails and automobile parking and different user groups here. That was then refined to a 30% level of construction documents. And then now, what we have just completed is the 60% level of construction documents. So, you know, the construction document set has grown from probably 80 pages with the 30% to now up to 140 some odd pages of construction documents covering the improvements associated with the trailhead. So as you can see here, most of the trailhead development, the access will be in this area here, and it consists of an entry. There will be bus parking, and there will be automobile parking, and then there's going to be a restroom and a classroom facility. This is that access road that still needs to be implemented and developed once the private development comes in surrounding the park site, so this is where we would connect into that private development road for that subdivision. The entire property line here is envisioned to be fenced in order to help keep traffic, you know, unwanted vehicles and things like that out of it. There will be a select locations here and along the top north edge, and also along this east property line, access points for pedestrians and equestrians to be able to enter through gates, and those will be controlled access points. The yellow trails are existing trails that are out on the site that are going to remain in place. These green trails are some new trail connections that are going to link the existing trails to new trails. And then we have a lot of trails that are going to go away, so that's the red trails here, these are all existing kind of just wildcat trails that will be revegetated so that you kind of have a series of looped walking paths that people can take around, you know, at different set intervals. There's also this kind of pink trail here, this is envisioned to be a pedestrian-only trail that goes up around to the Buttes and to a couple little rest nodes that are proposed to be developed on the Buttes. All the other trails would be multi-use, so pedestrians, equestrians, mountain bikers could all use those, the other trails. It's a beautiful site out there, if you haven't been out there, I encourage you definitely to go and visit it, that's what we, these images here, we, we stopped along, kind of the major areas along and took photos, so as we were developing the project, we kind of knew what to take advantage of. So this is an enlargement of the, the proposed trailhead development. So as you can see, this is, again, where we would need that connection to private development to occur. We come in and we would have a traffic circle with a, an entry gate, this would be an automatic gate that would close and open during those, those park hours when people are allowed to be on site. We have a long entry road that does take you all the way to, this is where the restroom and classroom building is located. This is bus parking area, and this is the automobile parking area. We do cross several big washes, so this trailhead has been designed with 100-year access, so that if a 100-year storm is coming, you know, the fire department, emergency access crews would have, this road would not be flooded during that 100-year storm event, so somebody could, emergency vehicles could get all the way to the trailhead and then hopefully, you know, help somebody off the trail if needed. So again, automobile parking or bus parking, it's envisioned that if the classroom facility is being used, that the buses could come, drop off in this traffic circle here, drop off, kids can then go to the classroom, this is also could serve as a drop off area if, you know, people are, are meeting up with other folks and utilize it in the parking There's two, there are two proposed kind of rest nodes out on the Butte itself, just below Poston's Tomb. This was just a conceptual rendering of what maybe these would look like, but they're envisioned to have low concrete seat walls, and then the opportunity for interpretive signage. Interpretive signage has kind of been conceptually developed to be these metal steel bench panels with graphics on them, and these graphics are going to talk about just the, some distant views and different features of the site, and some of the history associated with the tomb and, and the area. There's also actually taking one step back, there's also several, and they're kind of indicated by these little circles, they're old mines, test pits that have been out there, those are also going to be, majority of them will be filled in, they're very shallow, four feet to, at the most, so those will be kind of covered over, revegetated. There is one larger mine shaft though, that's quite deep, and that is going to have a structure built over it so that, just to improve the safety, and also it, in case there are any bats that are living in that cave, the bats will be able to come in and out of that mine So this is an enlargement of the automobile parking area, there is going to be a room for a trash enclosure. Several retention basins in the middle that will collect the first flush storm water that comes off the parking area, the water will go into these basins, and then will be percolated out through these drainage pipes and go into the existing washes. There is a pedestrian bridge here that will cross over this existing wash and lead to trails that go up around the Butte into the other trail system. This is the, the drop off area here with sidewalk that leads into plaza and your restroom building and your classroom building. So here we have the restroom building and the classroom building, and you can see there's, this is a large covered patio breezeway in between the two buildings. The classroom building itself has a small office, a storage area, and then this is the actual classroom space here. This is going to be an air-conditioned space, and it has a large patio here that all faces out and looks towards Poston Butte. The restroom will have men's side, women's side, and then a storage plumbing chain in the back. This will be on a, on a septic system, and the, we are bringing in a potable water line all along the length of the road, as well as power. And again, that's something that's going to have to be coordinated with that private development, as it comes in to bring in water and power facilities, we would coordinate in the future phases of design to help with that. The plaza area here, it does have some decorative concrete and some, some plain concrete that kind of enhance the look and feel of the plaza space below. These are some retaining walls here, these retaining walls help to support the plaza space and the buildings so that we can minimize our footprint upgrading into this existing wash. So some of those are concrete retaining walls, but then others are also gabion retaining walls, which are the, the rock-filled baskets, which in front of the, the library that has the town apport sign, so those gabion baskets there. So this is, just shows the schematic of the restroom, so the men's side has a, you know, two water closets, and the, those facilities, three, three, three areas on the women's side, a drinking fountain. So this shows the classroom building, so this is that small office, that storage area. This is a large, actually sliding window, or door, so this is like an accordion-style door, so this, this whole area when the weather's nice, you can open this completely up and be able to expand the classroom area out into the patio. It was also thought that if, you know, if it was ever desired to be rented, rented space, that you could have a small event here, and you could take advantage of having that nice patio with the views out to Poston Butte. These are some elevations of the building, so this is looking at the, the classroom building, so this is the large overhead shade canopy, which is right through here. So the shade canopy itself is envisioned to be made up of both perforated metal and solid metal panels, so that as you're under it, you don't get completely dark shade, but you get some filtered shade through there as well, but then you also do get that weatherproofing for rain. The size of the building are envisioned to be a board-formed concrete. And then you have basically these four columns that create the shade structure, those would have a board-formed concrete on the inside, but on the outside, they would have a stone veneer finish that looks very similar to the actual tomb that's on the Butte right now, which is this stone veneer. So that's an actual photo of the Butte, the tomb that's up on the Butte, and so that's what these, these sloped columns, if you could imagine you took a, the pyramid tomb and you split apart the four corners, that's what these four corners are supporting, and they're kind of in that pyramidal pipe shape. We've also taken some of these materials here, the corrugated metal, and introduced them on the sides of the building to just help kind of tie all that material together and that aesthetic, and, and around the different windows. So this is the classroom building on this side, this would be walking up, and the restroom building on this side. Above the restroom building, since this is a, just an open air structure, we try to introduce woven wire mesh to get lots of just natural ventilation for the restroom building. And then this is, since this is a conditioned space, the classroom, we have a little low screen wall here that would hide the air conditioning unit. This is the view on basically the southwest side, so again, some nice windows, these views, the, the windows are all placed to try to capture views out to distant mountains and the, the different surrounding preserves area. You can see this is that large overhead canopy that goes in between the two buildings, and then this is that extended roof line and patio that comes off the back of the classroom building here. So this is the view looking back towards what the parking area, so looking back this way, so this is that large accordion door that would be, you know, glass windows that would open up, be able to slide out so that you could take advantage of being in this nice outdoor space. So again, this is interior looking at the south side of the restroom, just showing the men's side, women's side, drinking fountain with multi-levels, to me, ADA accessibility, and then also with a bottle fill station. Just another image of kind of the restroom building, this is the backside of the restroom building, there's a door here so that maintenance can access all the different plumbing things that they need to access in the back, and also for storage. So this is kind of what the, the entry feature, so this is that entry gate and wall. Again, Poston Butte Preserve from signage, which is envisioned, and thought to be like a stainless steel sign with a, with a rusted metal background, you'd actually have a separate pedestrian walk-in, so this would be an earthen trail that somebody could walk into the preserve and go hiking, if they don't feel like driving to the site. And then this is the car entry, so there would be a gate that would actually be able to come across this entire area when the park is closed, or it rolls back and is hidden behind this wall when the park is open. This is just another elevation view of the restroom, we thought a nice welcome sign as you walk in through under this big canopy would be really nice, and we went ahead and we, we kind of found a quote, and it says, "In every walk with nature, one receives far more than he seeks," by John Muir. So just again, trying to make those connections for people coming out to enjoy the preserve and the trailhead. So this is some examples of some of the interpretive signage. We have larger directional signage for vehicles that would be at select locations directing traffic through the site. There would be smaller pedestrian directional signs, letting people know how to get to the different trails. This would be a trail map, so people could know the different loops of the trails and the distances, and it would also give the difficulties of the trails. This is some of the examples of what the interpretive signage could look like, that's around the building. And then here's a, what we kind of thought would, would be a neat idea, is that when you have long distant views, some of these interpretives could be basically framing a distant view, and so when you look through it, it's key that, you know, you might see this distant mountain in the background, or this historic building in the background over here, and there would be just information about those, what you're seeing through that framed view. So these would be at strategic locations throughout the site. And then these would be little trail markers along all the different trails, telling you, you know, where you're at and the distances and which way to go to kind of keep you on the different trails. And it was thought that the different trails could be named different items, so the railroad power line loop would be like a loop that goes all the way from down around the railroad tracks, up the east side of the park, along the north edge where the power line corridor is, and then take you back around. We've gone through, we have done some, an initial cost. We've gone through and we have done some, an initial cost estimate for it. And right now at this stage, the entire design we're thinking is going to be about 6.3 million. We've kind of broken it out. A lot of the general construction costs of MOP and surveying and things like that is around a million dollars. The grading and paving of the roads and some of the parking lots is about 1.4 million dollars. A lot of the drainage and utilities, so water lines, box culverts, piping, things like that, about a half a million dollars. Sidewalk, things like that, another 600,000. The interpretive signage, about 72,000. So the landscape and irrigation, so that includes salvaging all the existing trees that need to be moved, native seeding to restore areas that have been disturbed and then planting of new materials, another 500,000 or so. The two buildings together come out to be about 1.3 million. And then the site lighting at the buildings and also the roadway lighting along the entry road is another 300,000 or so. So all in all, we're looking at about, about a 6.3 million dollar construction project in today's dollars. And with that, I'm turning it over to questions.
All right, we'll start with Councilmember Hughes.
With the, with the completion of this, does this initiate a park ranger position and a, and a vehicle to, to take care of during the day and at, at night, making sure that everybody's safe?
Councilwoman, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Hezekiah, I think I can answer that question. I think first and foremost, we, we gotta remember that this is a plan that still needs to be flushed out. This is gonna be phased out over, over some time. I do believe in the past, there was a consideration of adding two additional maintenance individuals. And then I believe we have some part-time parks individuals that, that help oversight our, our parks as well. So, does that answer your question?
Bouncing in and out, or I am.
Mr. Hezekiah, would you repeat that one more time for Councilmember Hughes?
Sure. So I, I think to back up, first of all, this plan is something that's gonna need to be phased out over a multiple, a multitude of years. I believe in the past, there was a consideration of having two additional maintenance folks to help out with the facility. And then we already have some park ranger, part-time individuals that assist us as well. But obviously, before we go to break ground and we get any closer to that, we'll need to go through the budget process.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Larson?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know someone else was talking. I just had a couple of quick questions. I'm, well, first of all, I'm really happy to see this finally come to this point where we're in front of council. I know this is something we talked about for years and been working on diligently. I remember it coming before the Parks and Rec Board. And I still have some of the same questions and concerns that I had back then when, when we presented it to them. As far as the actual structure of the visitor's center, I had asked about family restrooms as well. We are a family-oriented community. And I wanted to see an opportunity there where they'd have like a family changing room or see if, you know, how much that would cost or if we could work that into that dynamic as well. Just a place where families could come and like change their young children or, or have access together. Another thing I had a question on, which I didn't remember ever getting an answer to, was in the conceptual design, the restrooms, I know it seems minor, but it would be a big thing for me, is, is there doors on the restrooms? Because in the design, it doesn't look like there are. And then I also had a concern and question about the gate opening and closing. When it does close and it, does it close automatically based on time? Is there someone there making sure that there is no one left in the park? And also, like, the people that are walking the trails say they walked in and they don't have a car there. Is there someone who's gonna be patrolling that to ensure that when the gate is closed, they have both a way out and that it's not causing a hindrance for anyone who is parked there? So those are my main three concerns. I'll let whoever answer.
Yeah, the, well, I can address the, the restrooms would have doors on them. So the, the individual stalls would have doors on them in the current design. The, the gate system, yes, it's usually controlled by a time sequence. Other, I mean, other entities that we've done this before, it's been, you know, the gate opens up at, you know, a set time and then it also closes at a set time. But then there typically would be that ranger scenario to make sure that everybody has kind of come off the, the mountain and that there's no cars left behind the gate at that time. We could also look at, I know in Phoenix, we've done it before where there has been, the gate only closes on the, the opening side and then the, on the exit side, you can have a treadle system. So it has the spikes that pop up, so you can only go exit that way. So that's definitely a modification that could be looked at and really needs to be discussed with like a, on a programming staffing level of what the best fit is for, for Florence.
Yeah, I personally feel that that would be much more beneficial. I would hate to see somebody stuck inside and not able to get out and causing undue staffing concerns as well. Someone has to go out there and rescue them from the gate. As well as with the gate mechanism, I was also concerned with where the walking path was at and which, which direction the, the gate was going to be opening and closing and pedestrian awareness as far as if there is an opening and closing mechanism in that walking path. That was also another concern.
Yeah, all the, all the automatic gates would have, you know, sensors. It's a very, it's a very similar system to like your garage door that it has the eyes and so if somebody breaks the sensor eye, and then it also has strobe detection for, you know, fire police. There's also, would also be like a, a keypad for, you know, fire police to be able to use a Knox box and have access to that as well. And then there's also typically in the pavement, loop detectors for where a vehicle comes over, just like if you were going to like a gated community or something and the gate won't close if you have that pressure pad. So all those things are definitely incorporated into those gates.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Hezekiah, Councilman Larson, and, you know, it could be something as simple as we've got an after-hours phone number somewhere posted on site as well. And that way, we can open the gate and close the gate if there's issues. And then again, having those part-time park rangers as well for assistance.
I just would hate, I know I've gone hiking, my phone's died while I'm hiking, I'm stuck, you know, I'm hoping to get out. And if I was in that situation, I wouldn't want to not be able to leave. So I'd much prefer the strip personally, so that way then you still have the option to exit, especially even then pedestrians as well, so.
Any other council members have questions?
I have a question.
And then Vice Mayor Anderson after Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. I, I think this is a great plan. I think it can be a huge asset for the town of Florence and bring people in from outside the area as well. A couple of things that I wasn't sure were included in the design. You mentioned that we would have power to the facility, but I was wondering if consideration had been given for solar, especially since Arizona is so solar-minded. And perhaps we could consider some type of partnership with APS for including something like that. Also, were there ideas presented for picnic remadas anywhere out along the trails or picnic areas either at the, at the building or throughout the, the trail system? That was a couple of my questions. Also, I didn't see a time-to-completion timeline anywhere in the documents. And I'm wondering, I realize that we still have a lot of boxes to check to get us to that point, but would love to know what, what our guess is for when we might be able to see hikers out on this, this new park.
Well, I can definitely answer the, the first two questions. So the solar, originally, it was discussed when we very first started programming the project that the town at that time did not want to entertain doing solar. But there's no reason why we couldn't, in the next phase of design, have discussions, you know, about solar and how that would, would work or could possibly potentially feed back into the grid or battery storage system. All those things could be explored, embedded. You know, we would just need to make sure that, you know, everybody's, everybody's on the same page with it. So definitely not beyond the realm of possibilities to incorporate something like that. And then again, kind of the same thing. It wasn't picnic remadas along the trails and pathways was never discussed as part of that programming initially, but there's no, nothing to say that that couldn't be a part of the, the programming.
And then I did have one other question or actually concern. When you mentioned the restroom facility, you indicated there would be an open-air concept with the hole-type metal mesh above near the roofline. That really concerns me in terms of the wind and the dust and the debris that we get throughout the area in terms of additional maintenance that might be required for that facility. I know we'll have to have some kind of staffing for maintenance, but that type of open-air facility does concern me.
Yes, again, that could be something that could be looked at. At the time, it was, that was the direction that we were kind of given was to go that way. Majority of the trailheads that are, the restrooms that are in like City of Phoenix Preserve are all open-air facilities. A lot of, you know, Mesa, just other municipalities, that's the direction that they choose to go. But again, could definitely take a look at, you know, if we're gonna have power to the site, you know, it's just a matter of changing the building enough to be able to, you know, close it in and air-condition it and have the, the mechanical system there to, to utilize that.
And then timeline-wise, what are we looking at?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, so Hezekiah here, Community Services, I can kind of answer that question. You know, that's largely dependent on there's an access road that I believe there's a development agreement and some decisions that are being made regarding that. And as far as that timeline, we're unaware where that's at as far as timeline. We are have, we do have a budgeted next fiscal year within capital to start with the fencing project around the property. That's about 3.7 miles. And so providing budget and, and working through the process, you know, it's gonna be a year-to-year and phasing the project out. This is not a small project.
Understood. Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I think several of my concerns have already been asked about the security. Christian asked several of those. I just was concerned about the, the, I guess we would call it the north border coming off the desert there. There's a lot of ATV vehicles and if we open it up for horses to come in, how do we keep the ATV vehicles out?
I, I was reading in the plan before, and Hezekiah, correct me if I am mistaken, but part of our process was phasing out or limiting some of the access points for the OHV in that area.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, definitely reducing, definitely reducing OHV traffic. And then I would imagine J2's design for the gates is done in a way that would limit it to equestrians' horses only and not able to allow UTVs or quads or anything like that through that area. So, correct.
One other point on that, will we have cameras there to be observed, you know, at night when we're not there? Is that some kind of monitoring?
Vice Mayor, I'd have to defer to J2 on that one.
Yeah. At this time, the, the site does not have a security system. So, but again, if, if power's being brought into the site, you know, most of those communication facilities, you know, can bring in a joint trench to have, you know, communication facilities there. There's also could be wireless network cameras and things like that. We would have to just have some discussions with IT on what systems the, the town uses and how to implement that. But it could definitely be implemented if, if that's the desire of the town for security cameras.
Well, if we're gonna have a $6 million facility out there, I think we need to have some kind of security on it.
Hezekiah? Vice Mayor's question partners a little bit what I was going to discuss as well. I had two items. The first one revolved around, we have this, you know, the classroom setting. Are there going to be computers or TV displays, smart boards? Will there be phones or any network available? And that ties right in with your Wi-Fi as well as the security. So potentially, could you meet with Trenton and discuss that between your two departments and J2 to see what we can bring forward?
Yes, Madam Mayor, definitely. And, and, and the future, as we get closer on the design, we can, we can bring that back as well.
I would suggest getting the police chief involved in it also because, you know, we have several areas now that we are putting cameras downtown, so it could all be part of the same system.
Excellent point. The other question that I had revolved around the trail system, I had a resident ask me about bike trails. They tend to go all over the state riding different trails. And they mentioned one that was down by Tucson where it's leveled by ease all the way through challenging levels and they're marked. Is that an opportunity that we have as well to create different type-of-trail systems for our residents or visitors to enjoy?
Madam Mayor, that's, that's a fantastic point because passive recreation is something that is growing tremendously. You know, families, dual-income families, they don't have the time necessarily anymore to devote to softball program, programming two or three days a week. So they, when they get out, they want to be able to get out, get their exercise in and see the outdoors and be able to get back to what they need to do. So providing those passive recreation opportunities and mountain biking sectioned out by difficulty levels makes total sense. And then also lends itself very well to future programs or events such as mountain bike races, running events and things like that. You know, the Community Services Department wants us to be an asset that we use. First and foremost, we preserve. We tell the story of Poston Butte. It's not only tells the history of Florence, but also of the state of Arizona. So it's an important asset. But we also want it to be used and to bring people to the area like you mentioned earlier.
Thank you. And lastly, if I recall, in 2025, we're actually planning 100-year celebration at the site as well.
From my understanding, yes. That's 1925, I guess, is when Charles Poston was buried up on the Butte. And we were, yep, that's the anniversary of 25 years.
100 years.
Sorry, yep, 100 years.
That's okay. I'm, I'm really excited. This has been a long process in regards of planning, feedback, continued planning, and, and we just, we keep inching it forward to where it's almost a reality. So I appreciate that. Are there any other council members that have questions about this project at the time? Okay. Well, that concludes the presentation section, and I look forward to our next step. Could you tell us what that is?
So next step is dependent on the budget process for next year. Right now, we have some capital in there for this project. It would mostly be consumed by the fencing of the 3.7 miles, but would keep us moving forward and keep it getting things done for this project. So that's probably the next step.
All right. Well, thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Allen, for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, thank you very much for, for having me.
Thank you again. All right. Our next item on the agenda is item 6B. And this is a recognition in honor of Lieutenant Terry Tryon retiring from the town of Florence with serving over 30 years in law enforcement. At this time, I'll turn it over to Chief Bruce Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Wow. It's already been said a couple of times tonight. Congratulations to Lieutenant Terry Tryon for service of 32 years in law enforcement. Lieutenant Tryon retired from the Florence Police Department on the first of September 2020. He served in several different aspects in the police department, from police officer to detective, to police sergeant, to finally, police lieutenant. One of Lieutenant Tryon's defining moments was when he was selected and graduated from the Northwestern Police and Command Staff School. Here, Terry graduated with straight A's. And I'll be the first to tell you, that's pretty difficult. I'm going to tell you, Council, I am going to miss the gentle teddy bear. But again, congratulations to Terry and his wife Sylvia as they start the next phase in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Walls. Is Terry able to be with us this evening?
No, ma'am, he's not. Matter of fact, I got a call from him earlier today. He is out visiting his grandkids. So he's off doing his retirement thing, and I'm so proud of him for doing it.
Well, we're very proud of him. And we want to express our sincere thanks and gratitude for your service to the town of Florence. I know you're out there listening. So thank you. Council, do you have anything to say as well?
I think we all want to congratulate Terry. I somehow missed the announcement, although I don't get on Facebook. Now, I just found out this week that he had retired. So I don't know. I didn't get the news. But I'm going to miss him, but he's always been so personal to me. And I think the town is going to miss him because I've never heard anyone saying bad about Terry.
I would second that. I, I just want to thank him for his many years of service to not only the town of Florence, but to the law enforcement community as well. And I just found out from him a few weeks ago before he retired that we share a mutual interest in the Yellowstone series. So I know he'll be watching when the next season comes out. So hopefully he'll get to enjoy the whole thing. Good luck in your retirement, Terry.
And just wanted to say the same, same thing, same sentiments. Congratulations. If you haven't seen the video, his final call is definitely emotional. I was so happy to see that. And I wish him the best of luck in his future adventures, wherever that may take him.
All right. Congratulations, Terry. Thank you so much for the years of service. You've, you've served Florence with dignity and integrity. And I'm, I'm so glad you're seeing your grandchildren. Thanks so much. And I'm so glad that you get your time with Sylvia now.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Chief Walls, for being here. And we look forward to seeing Terry out and about in the community as a civilian. Our next item is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote. As part of the consent agenda, unless there's a council member or a member of the public that objects at the time that agenda item is called. Item A is adoption of resolution number 1748-20. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving and designating Town Manager Brent Billingsley to act as applicant agent between the town of Florence and the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. Item B is approval of the programmatic agreement under the Historic Properties Treatment Plan between the town of Florence, the Bureau of Land Management, and the State Historic Preservation Office for the Poston Butte Preserve Project. And item C is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending July 31, 2020, in the amount of $5,2,399.90. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like any item removed at this time?
No.
With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Item A is unfinished business. This is discussion approval, disapproval of the Florence Returning Stronger Grant Program. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Benjamin Bitter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, obviously, we brought back the Returning Stronger Grant Program, and it is the culmination of a few months of, of discussion on, on all of our parts. And so we've, we've incorporated the discussions that we've had at the various work sessions as well as comments we've received from the public, from the Chamber of Commerce, and then as well from each of you as council members. And we put that together in the comprehensive package for you all so that you could tonight vote on moving forward with the program as outlined. What was included in your, in your agenda packets was the application that would go online tomorrow feasibly if approved tonight. The application outlines the eligibility criteria that has been discussed over the past few months, and finally, provides the means whereby our general public, our business community, our food banks, and home-based businesses can apply for some economic relief coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. And so with that, Mayor and Council, and to not belabor the point, maybe it's, it's best I just answer any questions you may have, given that we've certainly talked about this many times in the past.
You know, I just want to say thank you first and foremost, because as you mentioned, we had talked about this many, many times before in the past. This process, I'm really proud of our council, of our staff members, our community, for everybody bringing in their input and working together. A lot of other communities, if you look around, they didn't have such a communicative or even transparent process that had occurred. And we're unique in this manner. So I sincerely want to say thank you for the communication, the transparency, and continued effort trying to make it easier, especially on our business community to survive. Councilmember Wall?
I would echo what you just said about thanking our council members and Ben and all other town staff for helping to put this together with the input of not only the council, but the general public as well. I, I think you did a great job incorporating the comments that were received. I especially like the idea that we can reconsider increasing the cap that we discussed in the event that it appears important to do so. I have one question on the application, and maybe it's just that I'm not reading it correctly. On page four, the last page of the application before the W9 form, the next to the last bullet point says, I will provide requested performance data related to the use of funds for expenses as outlined in the grant guidelines. What did we mean by that?
Thanks, Mayor, Councilmember Wall. That's simply one of those type of legal criteria that we put in there to just make sure, should we need to go back and should our auditor request further documentation, we may be able to go back to that entity receiving the, the reimbursement funds and say, hey, you know what, our auditor had a little question on this. We just want to follow up with some further documentation. Don't anticipate it being a major issue. It's just one of those things that we keep in there just to say, hey, make sure that you're keeping your receipts. We're going to keep our receipts. We're going to be prepared for, for our, our audits that come across. But, but really want to be partners with, with the community moving forward. And should we have any further questions, just be able to follow up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all. The only question I had.
Councilmember Cordas?
My question would be a follow up then, because the way it reads, it says, related to the use of the funds. So that would be after they received the funds, how they spent it. But yet, in our last meeting, we made the statement that what they used to qualify for them was what was important. Once they got the funds, if they chose to use it for an air conditioner or something different, it wasn't really up to us to monitor that because we just had to make sure that they used, that they had the proof to qualify for it. So I just, I'm worried that it's, it's indicating that they have to be mindful of how they actually spend that money.
Yeah, Mayor Walter and Councilmember Cordas, I think that, I mean, I'm not necessarily sure that this is a vital sentence in the application. We certainly could remove it. I guess my point would also be that it would, you know, this, this line also goes to the speaking towards our use of the funds, not necessarily by the, the general public. It can kind of tread both ways, I guess. So I have no qualms taking it out. I mean, I think we, we asked Cliff, our attorney, if he has any issues with that. But again, I mean, we've, we've tried to put this together as quickly as possible. And so we've taken from, from various communities, and that was a guideline we found in another community and thought inappropriate as we move forward with our audit standards that we keep that in there as well.
And here is our town attorney right now. Would you like?
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I don't, I don't have a problem with the coming out. I think Ben, I think our intent was to allow for some flexibility. But as the council member mentioned, we, we don't anticipate doing any follow up on a regular basis with people who have received money. We just don't have the resources to do that. And that's not the business that we're in. So I don't think it's a fundamental issue with the program. So if the council feels comfortable taking it out, that's fine. I think, as Ben said, some of this is just copying from other forms, quite frankly. And it does allow some flexibility. But it's a valid point. We're certainly not intending to go out and do a lot of follow up on a routine basis with individual businesses that receive the grants.
I would agree that maybe we should take it out since it was a little bit confusing. And I would agree that we did discuss not having to follow up after the funds were dispersed.
I agree with you, Councilmember Wall. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes, there was a letter circulated this week from a homeowner, and I know the person, and I know they have a business in their home. I don't know if, if we've reached out to her or not. Have you talked to her, Ben?
I sent her an email and CC'd in our town staff. We, I have not heard back from her.
I called her. Yeah, I called her and left a message, but I haven't heard back either.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Mayor Walter, the, the lady that, that you're speaking to that circulated the letter, I believe her name is Carol Johnson. Is that correct?
Correct.
I know that Lisa has been working with Ms. Johnson. I believe Larry has as well.
Okay, good.
Will you give us an update on that if you have made contact? And I will also, again, try to follow up as well. But we'll stay back on our agenda item regarding the Returning Stronger Grant. The way that it is presented here, are there any other questions or concerns? Okay, without further ado, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the creation of the Florence Return Stronger Grant Program under the conditions explained in this application.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And we have just approved for local businesses, nonprofits, and food banks to have access to additional funding to reimburse them for their contributions towards improving public health during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you so much, everybody, for our hard work and effort and coming together on this item. Our next agenda item is item B, which is ordinance number 686-20. This is discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, amending, I believe, Mr. Billingsley. We are tabling item A B at this time because.
I'm here and can speak to it.
Oh, you're here?
Yes, ma'am, I am here.
Okay, I spoke with our town manager just before the meeting, and he did not know if you were going to make it. So we were going to table it if you were not here. So I'm going to proceed with reading it. This is an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending section 9643, street lighting requirements, improvement districts. This reading occurred on November 18, 2019, and March 16, 2020. I will turn this item over to Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, I apologize. My screen is not on. I did have a slight procedure today. So I did, did, I just wanted to be present to make sure the item got heard. If you remember, we had several work sessions on slids. This item was ready to go before council for voting. And during the pandemic, it just never got on to a meeting for action. This is the actual ordinance that would allow us to go in and to allow for slids to occur within areas that are already existing. Chris Solis, the town engineer, Public Works Director, he's also assisting with this item. And we do have two slids that are currently under review. One is for Mesquite Trails. And the second slid that the town engineer is currently talking with the developer about is for Sunrise Estates in the downtown area. So again, this just follows up the year worth of work we did on slids and takes forward the ordinance to completion. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, are there any questions regarding this agenda item? Without any questions or comments, we'll go ahead with a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 686-20.
And we need a second?
It's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 9A is new business. This is discussion approval, disapproval to accept Andrea Hill's resignation from the Community Services Advisory Board. Mr. Ezekiah Allen.
Madam Mayor, Council, if you're not aware, this individual has moved out of the town limits and thus as a part of ordinance and for the advisory board, we are recommending to council to remove her from the advisory board and to advertise to replace her position. Thanks. Any questions?
Go ahead, Karen.
You first, you had your hand up.
Oh, so when you say she moved out of the town limits, like the actual town limits or the town boundaries? Because I thought we passed something that, I thought we changed that, that our committees could now, as long as they resided in 85132, and they were within the town boundaries, they were allowed to be on our boards and committees. boundaries, they were allowed to be on our boards and committees so that we could get more people on them.
This is Lisa, I'd like to help her answer that question. The Town of Florence, when we adopted the new Community Service Advisory Board, we did say that particular board can be within the planning area of the Town of Florence. So that's the general plan, planning area. The person has left and went to Chandler, and that is no longer part of our planning area, so they cannot serve. Planning and zoning, Historic District Advisory Commission, those boards still required to live within our city limits. The board that is for our Pills Board, there can be specialists that live outside of the city limits. And each one has its own rules. And they're all by the Town of Florence code and published in the Town of Florence Boards and Commissions section of the code. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
I have a question about that. Are we saying that the entire Community Services Advisory Board could consist of individuals who don't live within town limits?
No, council actually allowed for a specific number to be able to reside outside of the city limits. I don't have my codebook with me since I'm at home. I will send that out to council in the morning. I believe that number is either three or four members, and it's a nine-member board now. So I'm thinking it might be three, but I would like to be able to review the ordinance and send it back to you.
That was kind of what I was thinking, was that we did put a limit on that, so thank you.
If I can expand on that, when you go read that, it's like three or four categories of members and what their qualifications are. So it's very specific about we have to have one businessperson. We have to have one musician. And, you know, it's quite complicated.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, we need a motion to accept Andrea's resignation.
A motion to accept Andrea Hill's resignation from the Community Service Advisory Board.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Hill, thank you so much for your service to our board. And Mr. Allen and Ms. Garcia, let's go ahead and get that advertised so we can get it filled as soon as possible. Item B is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a contract with Cactus Asphalt doing business as Cactus Transport Incorporated for asphalt maintenance and repair services in an amount not to exceed $403,602.99, which includes a 15% contingency. Mr. Christopher Solis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is pretty exciting tonight. This is essentially our fifth year. We've done more than one program a year, so it's hard to say how many that we've done. I would guess about eight to nine actual individual contract approvals on Cactus Asphalt. But this essentially completes all of the downtown area minus Main Street north of Ruggles or the post office, as well as Ruggles, which, if anyone knows the history of Ruggles, underneath Ruggles is, I don't know if it's five, six, seven, eight inches of concrete the whole way. That's why that's such a large hump. So that's going to be an extremely expensive project. But outside of those two areas, all of the chip ceiling that we have planned in the downtown area, this completes it. This is a huge milestone for Public Works and one that Dan Cisco's been working very hard on for the last essentially five years. So starting with Brent and his first year here, we have done, I think, like I said, five years' worth of chip sales projects, and this completes that. With that, are there any questions?
I don't have a question per se. We've been doing business with Cactus Asphalt for a while. I'm pleased with the quality of their work, and I can definitely tell the difference in our downtown over the years in regards to the roads, the maintenance, and how much they have really improved. So I want to say thank you because I know you guys have a really strong background when it comes to that type of infrastructure. And it has really transformed our downtown and revitalized that section of infrastructure. So thank you. The contracts looked right up front. Is there any council members that have questions or other comments with that? All right, with no other questions or comments, we do need a motion.
Make a motion to approve a contract with Cactus Transport Inc., DBA Cactus Asphalt, for asphalt maintenance and repair services in an amount not to exceed $403,602.99, including a 15% contingency. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Solis. Our next item is Item C, which is discussion approval disapproval of ratifying a lease agreement with Pinell County for use of the Florence Community Center as a Florence location for the COVID-19 testing, Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as I believe you're already aware, we were contacted a few weeks ago from Pinell County. Pinell County has contracted with the company, and they've purchased 8,000 quick turnaround COVID tests. And they were looking to set up regional testing centers around the county. We wanted to make sure that we got one of those testing centers in Florence. And we looked at several different facilities to try and make this work. We've settled upon the community center. So the lease that you have in front of you is essentially a 30-day lease for testing to occur in the community center with the potential to extend that for an additional 30 days if we feel that that is necessary and makes sense. I believe Tasha Spears was going to be on the line tonight to answer questions, but I just looked at the attendee list, and I don't believe she's on the list. So I'll do my best to answer questions if you have any.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
This testing, is it open to the public or is it limited?
Yes, it's open to the public. Anybody who wants to come and get tested, and it's free testing. They're looking to do testing in Florence three days a week, and then they're going to have an additional testing station in Centine Valley and one in Cassagrand.
This is Lisa, I would just like to add that it is by an appointment only, and they have to go through the Department of Health to get their scheduled time.
Lisa, will we have it advertised in regards to how they can make that contact to make the appointment?
Yeah.
Yes, Pinell County PIO will be working with our PIO, Mr. Ben Bitter, to make sure that all of that is on their social media pages, our social media pages, as well as advertised in the paper.
Excellent. I know that we have had some residents reach out in regards to testing and in our community. I'm glad that we're able to utilize our community center as well as being the original county seat. Pinell County is hosting it here as well, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, we also have the ability to have our employees tested there along with the same protocols. In addition, both Florence Gardens and Caliente have reached out to us and asked us to foster or sponsor public testing in the community. So once this is ratified and we're ready to roll, we'll make sure we get that information out to those groups as well.
Thank you very much. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we ratify the lease agreement to use the Florence Community Center as a Florence location for the COVID-19 testing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And that motion carries. Item D is discussion approval disapproval to lease 17 vehicles with the enterprise fleet management in an amount not to exceed $300,000. There's Mr. Chris Solis.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I was excited over the last item, and I'm equally as excited about this item as well. Again, I want to give a little bit of background before moving on to asking for any type of approvals. We started off with this project many months ago evaluating the long-term cost implications of leasing versus our current operations and the way that we typically buy vehicles, use vehicles, and then dispose of vehicles through our own private, through the options that are available to us. A lot of our vehicles are much older than 12 years old. We have some vehicles that are over 20 years old. I believe we have two police cruisers tonight that we're going to hopefully get to replace that are 1999's Crown Victorious. With that said, we looked at the ongoing maintenance, the fuel consumption. Most of our analysis was all, again, qualitative, I mean quantitative. There was a little bit of qualitative in the fact that it's tough to necessarily measure how much safer a vehicle is in comparison. We can look at safety features. We can look at the amount of airbags, antilock braking systems, stability control, which are much more useful for high-speed pursuits in the police department than necessarily in Public Works. But with that said, we looked at, and we had the finance department involved. So with that, I want to go back to the last council meeting and readdress a couple of questions because one of the things that we didn't do, we didn't have answers to, I think, two of the questions. And then I misspoke on one of the questions, just making a guess on how many vehicles we had, and I missed it almost by a factor of two. So with that said, I'm going to move on to looking at some of the past questions and then looking at the life cycle or cost of ownership over two vehicles that we just chose. One of them being a police vehicle, which isn't as effective in terms of cost as some of the other vehicles that we may have. But I know that the council members were very concerned about the upfitting cost of a police vehicle, the ability to reuse some of those pieces of equipment in the outfit. So we didn't just cherry pick the easiest two. We chose the police vehicle for a reason. So with that, I'd like to move on to my presentation.
Absolutely, proceed please.
So we start with some of the questions, and I'm not going to try to remember who asked those questions. I do know this one was Councilman Vice Mayor Anderson, this was the obvious one. So we look at, it sounds like a bubble, three years, $146,000. Why is this, essentially, why is there a bubble on this one? And that's the year the town is selling back fewer vehicles. And that was a key observation there and why some of the revenue is different. And that goes back to the presentation that was done with this purchase of 21 vehicles. So I'm sorry about the formatting of this. How long will it take to replace all the vehicles that we have now? Is that immediate or is that a spread out over years or a couple of years? So in the presentation, we looked at doing a two-year replacement of all the vehicles. And that was done really outside of the budget process and obviously without the council's review or approvals. So as of right now, we are going to ask for an approval of 17 vehicles this year. And one of the key reasons why we're asking for it at this council meeting is because of the police vehicles and getting on the list because in September, the new police vehicles come out, and we want to be higher on that list than lower. As it is, we may be getting vehicles in the late third quarter of the year versus last year, we literally got the vehicles, and I think June 30th or June 29th. So we want to avoid that. But the other part to that is we want to get this approval done because in my world, it always seems like November and December around the corner. And so we're always six months, I guess, either from or starting to the next budget cycle. So in no time at all, Becky and Carl will be asking us for, again, our budgets, our CIPs, our operational budgets. And so in order for us to start this program, have a better understanding, what we're going to do over the years is we need to get this approval and get this program started. So this will be a long way into doing that. This was answered again. Wow, the formatting is very different on the PowerPoint. So, very simple, our police vehicles, if we're able to buy in the 2021s, which is planned tonight, we will be able to get a series of those, flip those within the life cycle of that body and be able to reuse a majority, if not all, of that equipment in there. And then we'll understand that the next time on some of those vehicles, we will not be able to do that. So we'll be very careful in how many vehicles we buy near the end of a body series, if you will. Depending on the manufacturer, it's very typical for vehicles of maybe like a high-end luxury to only last for six years, where a more pedestrian work truck that is in nature industrial use may go up to eight years before it is updated. So we will monitor that. So again, this was a question of Councilwoman Cordas, and very good question. So we'll be monitoring that, we'll be able to reuse a majority of that equipment. GPS equipment directly transferable, and yes, we will be able to use that if we choose, or we can go on to their system. As of right now, we believe that our system is a little bit more cost-effective. So we'll have to evaluate that more. But as of right now, it doesn't drive this decision one way or the other. How many total vehicles are in the town fleet? And this is the one that I botched. I think I said like 56, if I remember right, and I was almost off by a factor of two. We have 92 vehicles, 44 are police vehicles, and 48 are light-duty trucks and SUVs. So as you can see, of those 44 police vehicles, a overwhelming majority are up in age. And so we are hoping to replace 10 police vehicles. And if you go back and look at the budget, we actually only were able to budget for three police vehicles this year at $62,000 apiece. So we are able to make a massive dent in upgrading our police operations vehicles. And that's good for us all because that will reduce our, we're spending a lot on maintaining these vehicles, and then we're having to have redundant vehicles just because the lack of reliability, to be fair.
Excuse me, Chris. Your slides aren't moving forward as you're going through these questions. We can only still see your cover page. Did you mean to show the individual question slides as you're going through these?
Yes, ma'am, I practiced this, and it worked previously. I'm not sure why, because it's, my screen is sharing, and all of my questions are moving. And it clearly says that my screen is sharing, so I apologize for this.
Press the presentation button, you're still in the edit page.
Mr. Solis, if I may, this is Trenton. If you're running on a dual monitor, I think it's running on the second monitor, not on your main monitor, might be the issue.
I am only running in one monitor.
Okay.
But I'm almost, well, no, I need to fix this issue. I'm sorry, what would be the correct fix then?
If you push the presentation button, the one that looks like a little, gosh, I don't know what to call it, it looks like a little standing screen because right now you're in the edit page. So you can see the slides to the left, one through seven, and then the main slide. Ben says he can help you. If you get out of share, he can share it from his screen and help you flip through it.
Okay, I hit stop sharing. You would go back one, Ben, I believe, at the very least. Okay, so we are complete with this slide, the next slide, sir? This question was, again, asked the last meeting about our current fleet maintenance. And so we currently have three mechanics. And this system would probably allow us to decrease to two mechanics. But we already have, and it's not an approved position, understand that, but we have it within our own plan to hire a wastewater mechanic, which is a common person within that industry to kind of separate. person within that industry to kind of separate some of the operations with some of the maintenance. And so the idea would be to transition this and we would not necessarily be reducing the entire workforce. We would be just shifting to a different department, a different funding source. Next slide. This was an important question and so grants. What are we going to be able to do with the grants, in other words? And so we evaluated all of our current grants. And the simple answer to this question is if the grant requires us to take title, it is probably best to keep on using our own funds to purchase those vehicles. It is very difficult to coordinate that with the actual grantor as far as if they require us to take title. So on certain programs, I think like 5310 and 5311, it's probably best to continue to use our own funds for those grant, I mean for those projects. And since we're able to get grants on that, it ends up working out really well. On something like a Stone Garden, that's kind of a two-part question as it relates to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant Processes, programs. On projects where there's an ongoing already grant in motion with the police department, it doesn't allow us to transition to this lease. That vehicle has to serve its life cycle, which I think if I remember right, and it's not really that important, but I think it's seven years. You have to utilize that vehicle and then it can be disposed of appropriately. But we would keep those vehicles within the current grant program. But in future grants, we could do the lease with that grant. And that's just something we'll have to talk about at that time. Mr. Bell with Enterprise has clients that do utilize the lease and he has clients that continue to pay, use the grant and purchase the vehicle. So it can be done either way on some of these here. And I don't think that that, I don't, again, I don't think that that impacts our ability to lease vehicles on ones where we're, where we're getting money with the take title. It's just fine, we'll purchase the vehicles, we'll maintain them in our own system. But graciously, Enterprise will continue to monitor the, they'll, they'll put those in their program as far as they'll tell us when to transition out of those vehicles if possible. They'll kind of help us on that. Next slide. Are we self-insured for the town's vehicles and the town is insured through the Southwest Risk? So on this one here, this was a little bit of a complicated response and I hope I have the question right. This was, I think, through the message system within our, our current process here, if I remember right. And so someone was asking essentially, I'll rephrase their question, but why can't we shop local for vehicles? And so there's a two-part answer to that. Number one, we always purchase off the state contract for our, for our vehicles, vehicles that we can obtain, which would be essentially any of our pickups for the HER, for the Streets Department, water, wastewater, parks and rec. And then obviously all of our police vehicles, all those kinds of vehicles we purchased through the state contract. And so the local provider, if you will, that was named in this question is not on that state contract first off. And so the way that we have it set up through Enterprise is where they would be purchasing, they would be purchasing these vehicles and then leasing them straight from General Motors for the police cruisers or Tahos, if you will. Those vehicles then are sent to a local seller. Those vehicles then are removed of all the, the plastics and the protective membrane, if you will, that covers the vehicle during transit. And so those vehicles could be sent to a local dealership. And then those tax dollars would stay within Pinot County, if that is, again, the request of the council. But, oh, it does say the vendor right here. So yeah, they are not on the state contract. It's kind of as simple as that. Next slide. So our total cost of ownership, and I'm not going to get into this line by line. I'm going to focus on the big picture, hoping that council, that's their, their purview is the big picture here. So this is the way we would look at it for an enterprise vehicle. So you can see vehicle one, vehicle two, vehicle three, vehicle four. So on a pickup truck, this is a 2500 work truck, four-by-two regular cab. So think of this as a parks and rec vehicle, regular cab. Based on our ability to purchase off the state contract, approximately almost 12,000 under market. After three years, we'll be able to sell that vehicle almost for what we bought it for. So we'll be reselling that vehicle every three years. So over 12 years, essentially, we will be changing the oil on that vehicle. Maybe the wiper blades, maybe a blown tire here and there. But we're not looking at doing a transmission upgrade. We are not looking at servicing a ton of parts in that short time. So after those four years, I mean those 12 years, it would be 4237 per year and it would be 50,838 to run that one truck. And now it says four trucks, but think of it as one truck, one service vehicle. Next slide. Now, this way is kind of the town of Florence's current methodology. So it'd be the same 2020 Chevrolet Silverado and we would be using that one vehicle for 12 years. And so as you can see, it's 59,136 for one truck for 12 years. And so we'd be saving $8,298 in saving with Enterprise Fleet Management. These costs are all-inclusive to the program. There are no hidden fees outside of this, these, this analysis. And this was come through by the finance department, both by Carl and Becky, very well. This has been scrutinized. This represents the total cost of ownership, not a partial cost, but a total cost of ownership over the 12 years, including any fees that are part of the enterprise program. So as you can see, it's a significant cost savings over that time period. That'd be, again, quantitative qualitatively. Again, these people, our Parks and Recs employees would be getting a new vehicle every three years and getting safety features. They wouldn't have any downtime. They wouldn't necessarily be experiencing, for example, the Parks and Rec vehicles currently, we've replaced HVAC systems and I think two or three of their vehicles in the last year and a half. That requires the complete disassemble of the dash assembly to replace the condenser. Nope, operator. That, I think, is almost a $2,500 job by itself to go to the dealership. It's been very expensive. And so they're also losing a vehicle during that time. So the opportunity cost was not analyzed in this, but there is an opportunity cost in this and the fact that we have less downtime within our vehicles. Next slide. These are the police Tahos. And as you can see, in that same period, we are only replacing the police Tahos every six years. So it would be only two within that same 12-year period. Same exact analysis, 149,646 to run the two Tahos for 12 years. Next slide. And so on this one, we're only going to save $5,750 in savings with the Enterprise Fleet Management. It's, it's less savings. It's expected, it's realistic because we're turning the vehicles over less. Anytime that we have a greater outfit, this will occur naturally because we're not going to get that cost back from when we sell a vehicle. So the best thing to do is to hold on to the vehicle a little bit longer. I know that before Chief Hughes retired, probably nine months beforehand, the last time that the council approved the purchase of Tahos, we very much scrutinized the equipment. We met, Lieutenant Tryon was even part of that meeting, but we went over the minimum requirements by the police department. And so we were very comfortable afterwards realizing that we have minimum requirements and there's no unnecessary equipment in there. We will probably be looking at that again with these new vehicles and with, again, Chief Walls. But we feel very comfortable with the number. So we've chosen kind of one of the easier vehicles and one of the more difficult vehicles. We've analyzed the entire life cycle, if you will, no hidden numbers. And again, staff is recommending the lease of 17 vehicles. That is within a few hundred dollars of the council's approved budget. I believe we budgeted 288,000 zero zero. And I believe we have 288, I think like 636 with no contingency in there. And then we've added some contingencies in, just in case the outfit of the new police Tahos is a little bit more than what we expected. That does allow us to put some money down on the Tahos, which we previously did, we didn't. So all around, again, the fleet department has participated. Public Works has participated. Finance has participated extensively. Administration has participated. They sat through the same type of presentations, both Brent and Lisa. And so I think we've had, including, I'm sorry, Ben Bitter. I believe we've had plenty of input from the staff side and poking holes at these ideas and making sure this is the right decision because it is a big decision moving forward. And we kind of encumber future years by doing this lease. With that, are there any questions?
All right, in the order that I saw hands go up. Vice Mayor, did your hand go up? If not, Councilwoman Cortez was the next up.
Okay, so I have, oh, I'm sorry, John, were you asking a question?
No.
Oh, okay. So I have a couple of questions. One regarding the budget. You said that we have already budgeted 288,000 even. So I'm just wondering why you're not trying to stay within the budget that was given, especially during these times where we don't know where our next dollar is really going to come from. I would prefer you to stay within the budget and not go over it. Because even 12,000, 15,000 is, is a lot to go over a budget when we might need that money somewhere else.
Okay. With that question, we did, the current quote is 288,636, I believe. So we're not going over 12,000, we're going over a few hundred. But we have contingency dollars in there. You're absolutely right, the total ask is with contingency dollars. And at the time, when we first presented this material, MHQ did not have any solid numbers on the 2021 Tahos because that information had not been released by General Motors. General Motors had literally released this information one day before I had to submit this presentation. So we have a number that is extremely close to our budget. And, but of course, we have a small, small amount of contingency. Or I'm sorry, we have a small amount over the budget. And if the council is going to limit the amount that we spend, we will work around that if that's the motion.
Okay, so I would like for you to stay within the budget, even if it is $11,184 difference because of the contingency. We might not have that $11,000 to spend. I would also like to know, I don't recall seeing any mention of other bids with other companies that offer fleets. So did we only work with this one company or did we get bids on doing this type of thing?
We did not necessarily get bids. We're using the cooperative language that already exists. But we did reach out to several, several customers and there really wasn't a solid competitor that we could find in the industry because, believe it or not, Enterprise owns a majority of rental companies at this point. But no, we did not necessarily look to bid this project as you would. We evaluated this as the largest provider and the overwhelming number one provider of leased vehicles within the state.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hughes, did you have anything as well?
Yes. Can you tell me, I heard you say 10 PD vehicles. What were the other vehicles, what departments?
Yes. We had budgeted one facility maintenance vehicle this year. And due to the lease program, we are replacing both facility maintenance vehicles. So we had one main, we had one budgeted for this year and one budgeted for next year. So we're now putting two facility maintenance vehicles in there. We are putting two HER vehicles that were not budgeted at all for this year. And that was discussed extensively with our finance director as well as administration. And not to throw anybody under the bus, but the idea was to utilize our entire budget. So that was one of the things that I was given as a directive to spend the 288 so that we could kind of do a most utilization, if you will. So we have one wastewater vehicle planned for this fiscal year and one wastewater vehicle planned for next year. And so those are two as well. So that's 16 I've named already. And then we have one parks and rec vehicle planned for this fiscal year. And so we decided to replace one parks and rec. So it's 10 police, one parks and rec, two HER, two wastewater, two facilities maintenance. And that was, that was kind of without direction necessarily from administration that, if you will, the idea was to utilize what our budget was and then look at our best utilization. So the very first thing that we did was we started off with just replacing three police vehicles and down the list with the CIP. But because of the lease program, we more than tripled the amount of police vehicles we could. We thought that was the highest need today was our police fleet. But we went from three to 10. And the other ones were essentially kind of the same there. But we analyzed the entire fleet for looking at how many miles are on vehicles, the maintenance costs of vehicles. And then we met with Lieutenant Tryon, Chief Walls, and I apologize, I cannot remember Rico's title. So no disrespect, I just can't remember. So we met with all of them as it relates to the police fleet. So there was very much coordination between Public Works and the police fleet on which ones that they would be getting rid of as well as the new vehicles that they're going to be getting.
Just to compare the cost savings in regards to what we're paying upfront versus maintenance and
and council.
That nature, Mr. Solis.
I apologize, it seemed like you cut out when you were disrupted there. Can you repeat?
I was talking and then Councilmember Hughes spoke. So I'm just going to ask my question again and then I'll have Councilmember Hughes speak as well. I just wanted to have that comparison right in front of me in regards to what we're being asked to approve upfront versus that overall cost savings long run.
I apologize for that. We never redid our analysis for the 17 vehicles as we previously had done for the 21 vehicles. When we looked at just parks and rec, I mean, sorry, just Public Works, we were looking at, I think, $41,000 in cost savings. This will be significantly more with some of the high-mileage police vehicles coming offline. But I think that's going to be something I'm going to have to update, hopefully in a future presentation for next year's lease program. Because once we kind of have a better understanding of the program as a whole, we'll be able to evaluate more of the total fleet versus this is just a partition of the fleet, unfortunately.
Right, because the way that I understood it from conversations and previous presentations was there would be a significant, as you just said, cost savings. So even though we're approving a contract upfront, we're going to see significant cost savings in regards to replacing our fleet, saving on that maintenance and those unexpected costs that are associated with older vehicles and vehicles that would need to be replaced.
Yeah, I mean, we could do some quick math. I mean, I think we looked at 5,900 plus dollars on each police Tahoe. That times 10 police Tahos, that's over $60,000 over those 12 years. And that's just one department. So I can only guess and extrapolate and say that we'll be saving well over $100,000 over a decade. And as pointed out, I mean, I think that a lot of those dollars are general over a decade. And as pointed out, I mean, I think that a lot of those dollars are general fund dollars. So I think it is important that we absolutely do our best to have that. But there is something, again, it's very qualitative as it relates to the police department, having police vehicles that are more reliable and safer. My number one goal as the Public Works Director is making sure that my employees return home to their families, to their kids and to their wives every day. So I can only assume, and we've talked about this, that Chief Hughes and Chief Walls feels very much the same way, that again, their number one goal is to make sure their employees get home safe to their families. So this aids in that overall, again, mission statement is that we need to make sure they have the safest vehicles in there. And so those newer police Tahos will have, again, advanced safety features, reliability. And that's been an issue, I will be honest. That's been an issue for, you know, Chief Walls, he has a bunch of aging vehicles that, especially about the volunteers, are just sitting there and not even getting exercise right now. So I mean, obviously, this is in the middle of a pandemic. But, but just normally, to have a whole bunch of vehicles that you have to have on staff because you're afraid of having four, four or five police vehicles and a ten-day period go bad on you is not a good thing. So this provides something that we can't necessarily put a dollar to it. And I didn't want to, I didn't want to overly inflate this. But there's a qualitative component that's not necessarily measured there that is, is very much, again, an opportunity cost that we can be using those dollars to other things. And it does free up a mechanic, too, that'll help us on the wastewater side eventually.
Valid point. Are there any other questions or comments from Council? Okay. At this time, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve a lease of seventeen vehicles with enterprise fleet management in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you very much for being here this evening as well, Mr. Bill.
Thank you very much for having me. Have a very nice evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is our manager's report. Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm going to do things a little bit different tonight than what I typically do. I've got my written report. Obviously, that's been provided lots of good information in there. I got one announcement, and then I have a statement that I want to read to make sure that I get it correct. So the first one is Chief Walls, Bruce Walls, who I believe is still on the phone, let me know last week that he has been elected as the Chair for the Homeland Security Regional Advisory Council for the East Region, which is a real honor. In terms of the Advisory Council itself, that's an appointment from the governor. And it involves a number of different things concerning communications, radios, new technology, and Operation Stone Garden. So not only has he been appointed and serves in this capacity, but he has newly been elected as the Chair. So congratulations come out to, go out to the chief with respect to that. And now I want to read the statement to make sure that I get it right. I think council is aware that we have a COVID task force that is made up of three individuals here at the town. And they meet on a weekly basis to discuss COVID and where we're at statewide, locally, Penale County, Town Florence, as well as our statistics analysis of other communities and where they're at in terms of their reopening process. And they provided me a litany of information today, and I want to make sure that I get it correctly. As you know, the Town of Florence created the Return Stronger Plan in the early stages of the COVID pandemic. As the cases in our state have spiked, then bottomed out, then spiked again, it's been difficult to reach reopening milestones as required by our plan. However, as the pandemic has continued, we've also learned more about techniques and practices that we can use to ensure that these that are working and or visiting our town facilities can remain safe and stay healthy. While it remains impractical to open the fitness center at this time, given the reduction to twenty-five percent capacity under the Arizona Department of Health Services guidelines, we feel that we're now prepared to open Town Hall and Community Development to the public for limited and modified hours. This modification will allow the public to access Town Hall and the Community Development Department for three days a week, in addition to other time slots by appointment. After additional technological upgrades, Town Council meetings may be available for in-person attendance starting in October. And I sent out an email last Friday with respect to that, that Trenton put together for me. I'd asked him to put together a protocol to where council members could attend in person, and if they felt more comfortable, could still attend from, from home and do that in an organized and facilitated manner as to not have the interruptions and the technical difficulties that we've experienced in the past. So thank you goes out to Trenton for that. We're hoping, as I said, in October, we are going to require masks in all town facilities for the public, and we'll be providing sanitizer as well. Get a lot of questions about the Library and Community Center. Library and Community Center will remain closed for at least the next month, as this location was just contracted tonight to be leased out to Penale County for COVID-19 testing for the next thirty days. Depending upon the severity of the crisis over the next month, the town will review whether or not to extend or cancel this testing contract. And will also address the possibility of reopening the Library and Community Center in the future. The town will continue to provide curbside delivery of books, as well as the pre-described and, as mentioned in my manager's report, recreation programs and materials. And the pickup station for the library has been relocated to Main Street. In the meantime, staff is dedicated to providing expanded levels of services to both our citizens and our customers. This is evident in the many virtual events, meal delivery programs, and innovations that our talented staff have implemented during this time of COVID. We're proud and honored as town employees to work in Florence and to be able to help our customers and the residents of Florence at this unique time. Are there any questions with respect to that statement?
I don't have any questions in respect to that statement, but I did have a question asked by one of our residents in regards to garbage and recycling. They were wondering if the recycling was going to resume. There has been one truck that's been picking up, you know, both, I understand, and
I don't have an answer to that. At this time, I wasn't aware that they weren't picking up recycling. So I'll get with Mr. Bitter about that, and we'll get something out to Council this week.
Okay. And to be very honest with you as well, I always, I've continued, as we were asked to, put out the recycling as recycling and the garbage as garbage. So it's not something I monitor either. However, it was brought to my attention, and I figured I'd ask because it falls under the reason why for a short time, they did, they did not pick up in that manner.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get with Mr. Bitter. We'll get something out to you guys.
Thank you.
I believe that our street is still, is now getting two trucks on Thursdays. So our garbage and our recycling are being picked up by two different trucks.
I have the same thing.
Perfect. Thank you. Like I said, I had a little message pop up, and I wanted to make sure I communicated that out because people are watching, which is great. All right. Are there any other questions regarding the manager's report? Councilmember Larson?
I had a question regarding COVID-19 and statistics as it stands. I know that we've been pushing or asking for the numbers that are directly related to the prison population so that we, as at least decision makers, can make better educated decisions regarding our own community. And I know we pushed on it, and I know TJ Schopf is well aware of our intentions and desires. I was wondering if you guys had heard anything about an update on that?
It's tremendously difficult. I was, I was looking at my phone right now because I got a series of texts this morning, actually from Ben, with respect to discrepancies. And they seem to be getting worse instead of better. Ben shared with me this morning that just in the last couple of days, Iman has reported a hundred and sixty-four new COVID cases. But according to the online tool, our zip code has only added thirty-nine in that timeframe. So clearly, the statistics just, they, they don't jibe. It doesn't make sense. And so we're expecting another spike in the next few days in our numbers from those cases that we know came from Iman. He also sent me another text today regarding more cases from, from another facility. I can't find it at this time. But there, there's no cross-population, if you will, from our zip code numbers to the prisons. And it tells us that that little spike that we had last week, I think a hundred and three cases, those weren't in the prisons because they're separate from the prison numbers. So we continue to struggle, we continue to ask, there continues to be problems.
And that goes right back to my point is that, you know, I'm hearing conflicting results as well. And it's very frustrating. And I've made it known, sort of individually, my frustration with the numbers not being reported accurately and not being able to make educated decisions. And so to me, this is something that, like, we need to step up as a community, as a town, and demand it, just the same way we demanded the COVID funding. This is the same way we demanded to have the statistics to get us where we're at. We, as a community, as well as the other prison neighbor, neighboring prison communities that have the same issues, we should be banding together to get accurate data. Because for us to still be closed, I can understand and resonate with the community's frustrations when they look around and they maybe know one or two neighbors, and yet they hear about this giant spike in Florence's leading COVID cases, and yet we're literally not seeing it with our eyes. So something isn't right with the numbers. And it's frustrated me to no end. And it's, I've really had enough personally. So I think that that's something that we, as a town, should really start taking more initiative with.
Councilmember Mayor, would you like us to do like a draft resolution for the next council meeting with respect to this item?
Yes, that would actually help greatly in regards to proceeding at higher levels. I know that other mayors, as well as state representatives, have been working to try to disaggregate and get some of that data clarified. However, if all of the different municipalities can come together and bring something forward, there is strength in numbers.
Yes, ma'am. We'll work on that. Ben, I see Ben's pretty face right now. I'm sure that he heard and is ready to put something together.
We just want to make sure that we're accurately reporting, and we've continually communicated and fought for that since the very beginning. And while there has been improvements, there's still areas that can be improved.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Our next item is item eleven, which is our department reports. Is there anybody on council that has a question from any of the department heads?
No.
Our next item is our call to the public. Trenton, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, Mayor. Kathy Adam has raised her hand, and she would like to speak.
I actually see her hand raised. It's blue.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Hello. So I have a quick question, and thank you for passing the Florence Returning Stronger Grant Program. When will the town be accepting applications?
I am understanding that it opens tomorrow. Mr. Ben Bitter, go ahead and take the lead.
Thanks, Mayor. And I apologize, Kathy, and those in the audience for not mentioning that. Yes, we will be accepting applications starting tomorrow morning. We direct everyone to the front page of the town website. So that's florenceaz.gov. We'll have the banner on there that will direct you right to the Returning Stronger Grant. Also, an email account has already been set up and is functioning. If you have questions, you can email rsgrant@florenceaz.gov. And again, we'll publish on social media and try to get the word out as best we can through all available channels. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent question.
Mayor, I do have Roger Beatty who would like to speak as well. Roger, I'm muted. You're able to speak at this time.
Hello, Mr. Beatty. How are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you. Roger Beatty from the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to thank everybody for passing the Return Stronger. Bill, I appreciate the fact that you did, or Bill is probably not the correct term. I do appreciate that you added the six months timeframe rather than three. I see that it is added quite a bit. Disappointed a little bit that you didn't really take into account home-based businesses. I see that they're basically excluded from everything other than things that they improve at their house, I guess, for customer relations, which I know a lot of the businesses that are home-based do not actually attend or bring people to their houses for. So the grant is basically, you know, it's not going to be for them, which is a little disappointing. That's, I guess, I guess that's it. A little disappointing tonight that we're looking at six million dollar parks and people spending a lot of money on cars, which I guess weren't needed. And we're not budgeting, but just trying to fill up their budget space. And, you know, we're still not helping the businesses as much as we could. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
It's my understanding, it's my understanding that home-based businesses are included in this.
John, if you read, if you read what, what was just sent out on your agenda, it says that home-based businesses do not include any utilities. They do not include any, what is the other thing? Any utilities are eligible. Only, it says only brick and mortar, only brick and mortar commercially-owned businesses are eligible for rent, mortgage, and utility reimbursement. So that would exclude all home-based businesses.
I misunderstood that because I was reading where it said home-based.
Yeah, you added the name, absolutely. But it just, you're not giving any money to them.
Yeah.
I am going to have Mr. Ben Bitter follow up with you because I do not believe that is accurate. And Mr. Ben Bitter, will you provide a follow-up to Council, as well as any release as well to clarify that statement that was made?
Yeah, Mayor, we certainly will. We'll have a press release going out tomorrow as well, outlining the program. But home-based businesses are eligible for the PPE reimbursement. The reason they are not eligible for rent and mortgage and utility assistance is because then we'd be giving finances to personal homes. And it's just not something that we could, we can quantify in the, in the program.
Isn't there a tax, isn't there a tax percentage that home-based businesses can take off on their taxes that they can account for, for business expenses?
Yeah, as a former financial advisor, I might be able to add something to that concern. The only way that you can quantify the expense of the home-based business for some type of grant relief would be if they could demonstrate that on their personal income tax, they actually took a deduction for the home-based business. And many home-based businesses do not go to the trouble of doing that because it immediately opens them up to audit. So I'm not sure that the town is in a position to ask our private residents to submit copies of their personal income tax in order to verify that. That would be my concern.
Madam Mayor, this is Brent. There's a greater implication in terms of the gift clause. If we're giving people money to pay their mortgage or their utility bills for their private home, that's, that's something that, I mean, Cliff can weigh in, but that's going to be a tough one on, from a legal standpoint. The gift clause is there for a reason.
All right. Well, thank you. And Ben, I look forward to this being a little bit more elaborated on. And Councilmember Wall? All right. Well, thank you. And Ben, I look forward to this being a little bit more elaborated on. And Councilmember Wall, I certainly appreciate your expertise as well.
Madam Mayor, I have another member of the public, Courtney, that would like to speak. She's raised her hand. If she could just state your full name and address, you can address the council at this time.
Excellent.
Hey, guys. It's Courtney at seven twenty-nine Bunker Hill Drive here in Florence.
Hi, Courtney. How are you this evening?
Hi, guys. I'm good. Yeah, I just wanted to just kind of chime in on Roger. I'm glad he was here on behalf of the chamber, on behalf of the businesses here in town, and he kind of spoke words that I wanted to say. So I think it would be a good idea if you guys could look into that with the home-based businesses, you know, and just kind of make it clear what, what, you know, these kinds of people would be entitled to with those funds.
I appreciate that feedback, and Mr. Ben Bitter will definitely be communicating that out in his press release.
Thank you.
You are so welcome. Thank you again.
Mayor, I have another member who's unmuted themselves, Juanita Ponza. Do you wish to speak at this time?
No.
All right. Well, thank you for being here this evening, Juanita.
You're welcome. I just want to say thank you, you guys.
Well, thank you for being here.
Okay, Mayor, no other members of the public have raised their hand to speak at this time.
All right. We have our call to the council for current events only. I will start with Councilmember Kristen Larson.
I just, again, want to say congratulations to Terry Tryon, and otherwise, I don't really have anything. Everyone's staying safe. Hopefully, our trees are all standing in the morning with this weather, and that everyone's enjoyed their long weekend that they just had. So otherwise, I really don't have anything.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hughes.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Wall?
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Cordis?
Sorry, my mouse doesn't like me today. I just wanted to congratulate Lieutenant Tryon. I know he's not on here, but maybe he'll watch this later. Thirty years is a long time to be in any profession, so that's a, that's a great determination and mindset to stick to what you love. And he must have loved his job. And so I'm sure he'll be finding a new thing to keep him occupied, or his wife will find him something to do. And I wanted to congratulate Chief Walls on his appointment. That's a great thing, and I love always hearing how our staff members are going out and trying to immerse themselves into other areas within our state and our country because it's great. It keeps putting Florence on the map, so I really appreciate that. And I just realized how dark it is behind me. Second, and then, of course, I always want to tell everybody, remember to visit your neighbors, bake them some cookies, or take them some groceries, or make them a card. You know, I know a lot of us are starting to venture out. I went to the movies this weekend. It was great. There was social distancing. They were very clean and very good at making sure that nobody was cross-contaminating, and we saw a great movie, Words on Bathroom Walls. It's about a boy who has schizophrenia. It's a very good movie. So I just want to remind everybody to just keep looking after your neighbors. Mental health and emotional health are a big deal, especially when we feel isolated, and we only get to see people, you know, maybe at the grocery store, and we don't get to have that physical contact. I also wanted to take a moment to just express my own personal apology to our business community and our residents. I know last time we had a meeting, a lot of you were rallied up and asked to attend so that you could give your opinion on our CARES Act funds. And a lot of you, you know, went out of your comfort zone and attended our meeting, and you weren't given the opportunity to speak. And I know that it upset a lot of you, and I personally was upset as well, because I felt that everybody should have been given the opportunity to speak. And I don't care if it's in a work session or a public meeting like this. I think everybody should be given that opportunity. So I just wanted to let you know that I apologize for not doing enough to make sure that I advocated for the citizens to be able to speak, and know that you are heard by me, and whether it's email, or stopping me in the grocery store, or finding me at the Windmill Winery, like I was the other night, and talking to me, I'm listening to you, and I'm trying to do my best. So hopefully, we won't have that issue again, in that when people show up to speak, they'll be given that opportunity. Other than that, just love your neighbors and keep on doing what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye. I want to, second what Sharon just said, I think everybody should be given the opportunity to speak. And I did turn that in as part of my suggestions about our procedure updates and changes. Hopefully, we'll have a meeting on that soon. And I think I want to compliment our new staff members, you know, how they've come on board and, you know, hit the road running. Thank you. And Larry Harmer is back in his old position. You know, we've got a real good crew working for us, and I'm pleased to have them there. I want to thank Chief Traitor for all that he's done for the town, and hope he enjoys his retirement. I think his last day is by December, or first December, something like that. So. And Bruce Wall, I'm so impressed with Chief Wall, and he's come in and just taken over. So thank you all for all the good work that you've done for us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know what, Vice Mayor, you're absolutely correct. We have such a high caliber of staff that works for the Town of Florence. And I'm really thankful to have the opportunity to work with all of, everybody, really, I was going to say, all these fine individuals. The improvements that we've seen earlier, when I talked about the cactus transport and how we are continuing to fix up the roads. I can remember several years back where our roads were falling apart and crumbling, and to see the improvements that have taken place in Florence Gardens. And Caliente is now undergoing some work that they have taken on. Town of Florence Historic has, every inch has been touched and fixed, as well as in our Anthem community, where there was settling, and we would have gaps in the road that were as thick as my thumb and as deep as well. So again, when we take care of our things and we keep them nice, as well as when we improve things and work to keep them nice, it makes the community better. I also wanted to, and I wrote this down as well, thirty-two years for Lieutenant Terry Tryon, and working through all of those ranks, and going through the academy with straight A's. That's something new that I learned. I did not know that about him with his academic achievement there, as well as Chief Walls with the Homeland Security and being appointed to their council. We work intrinsically with other organizations, and having seats at the table with these organizations are mutually beneficial. In regards to the Returning Stronger Grants, I'm really proud of what we accomplished as a community, staff, council. We've brought forward a lot of help that is much needed among our business community. I also do want to apologize, and I had that written down, because when it came to the work session, I explained it to our chamber president, as well as a business owner that I had reached out to, and several discussions that I've had since then. We were unable to see, and since then, I've talked and I've gotten with Trenton Schaefer and our town staff. So we are continually expanding. It's always, and that's why I said it earlier, we believe in communication, we believe in collaboration, and we believe in transparency. And that's something that we practice, and we brought it to life with this whole process of the Returning Stronger Grant. As I mentioned earlier, some communities simply came forward. They put out what they were going to do, and they didn't have that process of hearing from everybody, from communicating how it was going to be disseminated. They just made that decision. And communities that received two times as much as we did gave half the amount out. Our neighboring town, they didn't give any out. They kept it. So I just want to say again, I'm really proud, really thankful that we've had this opportunity. We're continuing to fight and advocate for additional funding, so when that comes in, we're going to continue that process. We have an executive session this evening, so at that time, I need a motion, please.
Make a motion, we adjourn from, or adjourn to executive session.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries.